You want to do it, Paul? Okay, good evening, welcome to the City of Rock and Committee of the Whole for Tuesday night, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have a hybrid meeting with Zoom and in-person and council chambers. Clerk McCura, please call the role.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris are present.
Okay. New business referrals, Submarine Veterans Incorporated donation. So there was a request for a donation. This is to help them with the Thanksgiving drive that they do. They do a tremendous job with that, and they serve, I don't know, lots of veterans and first responders and so retired, active duty, disabled people in the area. They also serve sub-school guys, sub-school kids that are here in school that haven't gone back home for Thanksgiving. And so they're asking for a donation. And so I'm going to leave it open. We didn't put a number in there. We can talk about the number now. Ron provided us the information for that we've given before. So open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have your hand up?
I don't, I didn't see anywhere. So I see we gave five hundred and twenty-one and three hundred and twenty-nineteen.
Right.
They didn't put anywhere how much it costs them or like what their budget is or?
No. They do get some donations of turkeys. There's some local grocery stores that provide donations. They also get some help from the submarine base, from the, from the galley as far as cooking, some turkeys and making some sides and things like that. All the baked goods are donated from local residents and, and sub-vet members and, and veterans and things like that.
I mean, it looks like.
But they put out, did he put how many people?
I think he-
Okay, over fourteen-hundred meals and five hundred and fifty sub-school students and their families. They do buy a bunch of turkeys and things like that.
I mean, my initial thought is to do at least six hundred. One, everything costs more since twenty twenty-one. And two, that's how much we didn't spend last year. So even if we got the same amount of appeals this year for donations, giving six hundred to this group wouldn't impact our ability to give to other groups. So I, I think it should at least be six hundred dollars. That's my
All right.
initial thought.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
Was there a specific amount that they were looking to?
They didn't ask for that in their donation letter. Look, and there's a cover letter, and then they were asking for monies, but they were also asking for turkeys and, and other help as well. So this was just a general request to help for the Thanksgiving dinner.
Yeah, wouldn't know how much they would need. I guess whatever's required, I guess, is fine with me, I guess, as far as how much they need for the food.
Okay, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know if they still have the soldiers or sailors apply to, are families still taking them to bring them to dinner at their own home? Do they still do that?
I think they still, I think-
Because I've been involved in that, but I haven't done it a while.
That's at the base. So I don't, sub-vets, so sub-vets would not get involved in that. The base would do that to find-
Okay.
-families to give sailors-
Okay.
-food. This is at the actual sub-vets clubhouse on School Street. When I went down there to help, they've had seven to ten fryers.
Mm-hmm.
So they're actively frying turkeys, and then they're baking turkeys and they're making all those sides and getting the sides ready. Some of this starts the night before, obviously.
So do they actually serve and feed them there, or do they actually bring them? Or do they come and get it and then go somewhere else?
Okay, so that's another thing volunteers do, which is actually pretty cool. So they, they do, they do a variety of things. In the afternoon, after they've already fed the, and sent the volunteers out to drive, I mean, I've driven all over Ledger to deliver meals to veterans and their, their wives and widows and things like that. They have the, the upstairs, they actually run shifts for meals. So they're feeding sailors there. So for the people that have duty, they take orders and they deliver them to the different, to all the boats that are there, particularly the ones that are in new construction-
Mm-hmm.
-and at electric boat. They also feed first responders, meaning fire departments, police departments, and ambulance crews. So they are feeding, when, when it's all said and done, I'm sure they feed close to two thousand people.
Yeah, because they mentioned here nine hundred to fourteen hundred. So that's about, that's the average per year they're doing? Am I understanding that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm looking at nine hundred, fourteen hundred. I mean, I've, I've been involved, when I was in Virginia and also here, I used to actually take two or three sailors and have the, come to dinner in our home. So, you know, I'm thinking like, I think six hundred is great because that's even, if, even if they do nine hundred, let's say in the low end, that's less than a dollar, you know, per meal. And I think six hundred would be wonderful. If we had nine hundred, I'd say nine hundred at least.
Well, right now, we haven't spent any.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at twenty twenty-four. My, my error. So I would say at least a dollar a meal. So nine hundred, I'd say at least, or a thousand.
I'm thinking, yeah, six hundred even enough, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I know even if six hundred's even enough, you know, so I don't know. I wish they gave us kind of a figure, but, you know.
Because, you know, if they're looking mainly for turkeys, I mean, turkeys are going to be expensive this year. So, you know, if they're doing on average, if you can average that out, it's going to be about eleven fifty, you know, if you just give a, a dollar per turkey.
So they have a standard, you know, a standard plate with a plastic cover.
Mm-hmm.
And they usually have turkey, dressing, green beans, potatoes, something else. And then they have a, you know, obviously dessert that goes with that.
Because if we, even when we fix our own plates, it's going to cost us more than a dollar to fix a plate. So, you know, a thousand or so, if we average it out between nine hundred and fourteen hundred, it's going to be about, what was that? It's going to be about eleven fifty. So I would say a thousand, just so we're covering a dollar per plate at least, you know. And then I would be more than happy to make some, I'll contact and make some stuff for them and serve too. So.
It is a pretty special event. I mean-
It is.
That morning, I mean, the last couple of years, I haven't, things have come up and I haven't been able to go, but before that, I was going a lot. And it, I mean, there's a couple, there's one woman that comes in from Texas, and she, everybody, she sets it up and says, here's the order, here's how you're going to do. And it's volunteers, and she tells them, you know, here's your portion control, here's how we're going to do it. And it moves. And they, you know, they have a list of how many, what the boat number or what the organization name is and how many. And they got boxes and they just, they're making them, and then they fill them up, and then they send people out in their vehicles to go deliver.
Yeah. I used to be involved in Napple Fest, but when my, my husband, my first husband was in Navy and he passed away young. So that's when I started getting involved in sponsoring sailors. That was kind of like my memorial to him.
Sure.
So, and they always like really appreciate it, having a family to go to and not just having a meal, but just hanging out with family. They really enjoyed that, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Patterson?
Yeah, so I think that a thousand dollars would be sufficient, given the times that we're in now, and if we have money to spend, given to them would probably be the best bet, given that we're in a sub-base community, you know. I don't see why, why not?
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot, you had your hand?
I just wanted to clarify. I only, I started at the six hundred. I agree with doing a thousand dollars. I started at the six hundred just in case we were thinking if we had the same number of appeals as last year, we didn't want to leave anyone out, but-
Absolutely. And I, and I understand your rationale for starting out. I mean, you started the number out and then the bidding went up.
Yeah.
So we go from there. So is everybody okay with a thousand dollars? We'll get a consensus? All right, so Danny will put that in for a thousand. And with that, I'll, let's see, what's my next meeting? Next meeting is next Monday, Ryan. Should be twenty-first, right? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of October twenty-first.
So move second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, stench, and most of them carries. All right, youth advisory application of Denise James is?
I don't believe that's Ms. James.
All right, so I was presented with this application, the application you guys have in front of you. And we do have a need for another person on youth advisory. We're still having some challenges with having quorums and getting everybody together. She's not here, right? She's not coming?
No, she was invited, but I-
Okay, that's fine. Since she's not here, may I make one of the questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to comment, I, I know she sent us the application and she works in an elementary school. And I think, you know, that's, and she has grandkids in the community. So I think it's a good addition to our, our group for youth advisor board. Makes sense to me.
Okay. Any other question or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of October twenty-first.
So move-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, stench, and most of them carries. All right, we'll move on. The next thing is ARPA review. This is informing. So in your packet, we provided the updated spreadsheet along with the email that we got from CCM. And all right, Ryan, I'm going to let you talk highly about, at high levels about this, and then as questions come up, we can answer. We tried to make the spreadsheet as easy to follow as possible regarding RFPs, but Ron can, I've asked Ron to update us on the RFPs and where they stand and when they're going to be closed out and things like that.
So on the spreadsheet that we handed out, we had the original list that was approved by council of all of the projects with a dollar amount coming down to the two point six million. The next column over is the revised slash estimated and/or actual cost if the project is completed, just to kind of put a side by side of where we are with these projects. So you can see in the yellow, the third one down originally was a zero. That was the pickup truck replacement for the fire, and it was approved at council for the fifty-six thousand. So it's just kind of an example of one that was added to it. Another example, when we go down towards the bottom, the fifth, fifth and sixth one, or fifth and fourth one from the bottom, the municipal document control room, one hundred and twenty thousand, that was in the original plan. We did back that out. We, we don't feel that we're going to get there with that, and we don't really have the full design of what we wanted to do for that control room down in the basement. So we thought it was prudent to remove that. And then the same with the rain gardens. We, just because that was going to be funded by a grant, and we didn't want to get into using a, our, our portion of that with another grant for. So we just don't want to get into any issues with that. So with that being said, you can see on the status side, all the projects that are completed and or added, there are three RFPs that are currently out. We did have the pre-bid meetings on those. Those were all mandatory pre-bid meetings. These, all three of these close October twenty-second. The Z House, there was five vendors that attended that pre-bid meeting. The tennis courts had seven vendors, and the switchgear had eight vendors that attended. So there was interest in those projects. So on the twenty-second, we will know kind of where those projects stand. We currently have two other RFPs that are with the department heads for review, and those projects are going to be down on the bottom, which are additional projects, because we don't know where some of these RFPs are going to come in. For example, the tennis courts, there's nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand put aside for that. But if that comes in at, I'm just going to throw, I don't know where it's going to come in. So, but say that comes in at five hundred thousand, it's going to be significantly different. So we wanted to make sure we had other projects in the queue lined up to keep going. And the, the thought process being parks and rec-driven. So that way, it's all the community that can see these improvements. So the ones that are currently back with the department heads is the Washington Park bathroom remodel siding slash facility renovations down there. What that RFP entails is doing complete renovations of both bathrooms in the park, the interior, and also the exterior and putting vinyl siding so it'll match the press boxes. And also, we have in there the, the two existing brown cement buildings to also side those as well and to do some of the repair work to try to make all those buildings look uniform. So that one's current, we're hoping, like since in review with the department, hoping to issue that this Thursday with a closing date of November seventh. And then the other one is there's a need for some sewer rehabilitation down the police locker rooms. I think you, we've all heard about this. So that one has currently also been put together. It's back with the department head for review. We're hoping to issue that one by this Friday, again, with another closing date of eleven seven. Again, not knowing where these projects are going to come in, we just wanted to make sure we had these projects in the queue. The other ones that are also in the queue that involve the park are the swing replacement and the exercise equipment. The current proposal for the exercise equipment, and I don't want to completely misspeak, but I think it was three pieces of equipment plus one new piece of equipment. We're also looking to replace all of the equipment and start over with the new exercise. So that way, it, there's not one new piece, one older piece. But again, Mary's working with the, off the state bid list with the vendors on that to get the pricing. So we won't have to issue the RFP. We can utilize the state bid, and that'll also be the same with the swing replacement. The one other item that, that's a park item that was on the original approved that we really haven't got our arms around yet is the internet for the Washington Park. And I'll kind of let the mayor talk more about that. And we're looking to maybe pull that off of the, the ARPA list to do some of these other projects. But again, we wanted to get feedback before we went with that. I believe Mary has been reaching out to Atlantic Broadband, trying to get some pricing for what that would be. And again, the, with the internet costs, there would be an ongoing cost with that as far as the monthly cost that we, we're not sure what that will be at this point either. So those are just a very high level, and I'll let the mayor kind of jump in as to-
Okay. So, you know, kicking off with the, the internet, we looked at the, the beach in the Washington Park, and the challenge with the beach is infrastructure and the cost of that. Plus, we started talking about what is the recurring and long-term cost. We're not a hundred percent sure of what that is, but one of the things that we've tried to do with our ARPA projects is not to establish a program that has continuing recurring costs that the taxpayer is now going to have to pick up once our funds are expended. The small business grant we had set up for a hundred thousand dollars, we had several meetings with an organization that we were going to use. And originally, we had, we wanted to have all the money identified and expended by this month. This was before we got the email. We talked about this earlier this year. We were unable to come up with an agreement on how that was going to be handled and how they were going to be able to distribute the money. In addition to that, of the hundred thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars was going to go to them. And they want, they were going to get that upfront with no guarantee that the other seventy thousand was going to be distributed. And eventually talks just stopped. So we have that, and our logic is if, if, if we can take that money, put it into the parks, then the general population will see benefit from that, those funds as well. So that's our presentation. And with that, I'll open the floor up for discussion. Counselor Sheffield?
Ron, on the small business grant was, a hundred thousand was removed. Is that money, did we get something else besides?
Yeah. So you see, like, we went through with the cost of approval by council with that hundred thousand, it now zeroed it down. But we've all, we've used, we've added other projects, Ken being the pickup truck for the fire department and the ladder truck repairs. So you can see right now, our difference with our new proposed projects is around fifty-three thousand, and our estimated for all of these other projects well exceed that amount. But again, we're not, we don't really know, or like, the tennis court being the, the big ticket item, if that comes in significantly under, that fifty-two will go up. So we just, we're just trying to make sure we have everything in line. So yeah, so it's kind of been reallocated for other, other projects.
Well, and the other thing on the difference is fifty-two, I'm looking, so if you go up to the exercise equipment, when we have twenty-five thousand set up there, if we wanted to change out all that exercise equipment, that's going to be more than twenty-five thousand dollars. So one of the things we were talking to Mary about is if you, if you look at where the exercise equipment is now, it's tucked back in a corner, and you don't know how well it's used or how many people are using it. What we're looking to do now is bring it down by Pavilion Five, and instead of having it all clumped together to get it set up so that it's actually used like other parks use it. So you have a station here, and then you have to travel a little bit, either running or walking or whatever, to get to the next station to get through the circuit. And so that's one of the things we're going to ask the company to help us figure out. But that's one of the things we were looking at.
And also, speaking of the tennis courts, are we using the low bid also to process on this one, similar to the basketball where low bid, you know, is?
It, it will depend on, on the, the packet that is submitted. It will be reviewed and vetted, similar to how we did the basketball courts, where we will check references and make sure that other communities that have used them are happy. And just to circle back on the basketball courts, because it is on this list, we did meet with the vendor and shared all of the council's concerns that were brought up at that meeting. So the vendor is well aware on that basketball court as far as, of what the concerns were. My council were very upfront with them.
Thank you.
Well, and, and our, our process is to look at, so we're, we're doing a whole concept process. So it's not just low bidder, it's best value. So we look at technically capable, technically capable and cost. So we look at all of that. So, then, get your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just had a question in reference to the bathroom modeling. I know they've had some issues with some people mess around in the bathrooms. Are they going to actually do any kind of security as far as cameras or anything added into that? Is that in the project or not?
Yes. So, well, hold on. I'm going to answer your first question.
Okay.
Security. I, I'm not, I'm, right now, I'm not putting cameras. So what we're going to do on all our buildings, we're going to replace all the doors, and the doors are going to have key punch locks so that people that are, let's say if somebody rents Pavilion Five, then they'll get the codes so they can do that, and we can change the codes. And that the, the Little League, when, when they get there, they'll have a code as well. So I toured the bathrooms, walked the bathrooms, and as a result of my touring, I decided to go ahead and gut the entire bathrooms. So we're going to replace everything. There's, there's the old metal stalls. We're going to go to the composite material that we used out the beach. That'll last us longer. We have some sinks and urinals that are old enough that they are stained. So we're going to, we're just, I'm gutting the entire bathrooms. So we're going to replace everything in the bathrooms, and we're going to strip it down. We're going to paint. We're going to have a non, let me be careful with the words. I don't know if it's, it's a non-skin necessarily, but it's like sand or something in the paint so that it's not slippery on the, on the floors. And then outside, I looked at the outside, we've been working a little bit, the one of our, one of our, one of our bathrooms is three colors, where I want to go. So I decided we're going to go with, with vinyl. And the vinyl was going to match the press boxes so that all of our stuff is, is going to match. And then we have a couple of stone buildings. We're going to go in there, we're going to power wash, make sure those are all cleaned up. So this is an opportunity for us to take the park to the next level so that it'll be the park that we deserve here in the City of Rock. And we're going to do that. So.
So then I just wanted to ask in reference to that. So if you're going to have a code, what does that do for, say, bus drivers who stop to use the bathroom? That's not going to be available? It's only for those who are actually accessing the parks, such as Little Leagues and so forth and so on, or renting?
If we need to address that when it comes up, we can address it when it comes up. So you can come and talk to me, and we can start thinking about how we're going to address that if that's an issue.
Yeah, because a lot of the bus drivers I know depend definitely on Washington Parks bathroom. And my other thing is for the, the roof replacements on the pavilions. So I know the one that's up on the hill, I'm not sure if it's happening, but I know like the, the soil was washing onto the cement itself. So has that been taken care of? Is that something that's going to be included in that?
So, so what we just decided to do is split this into two projects. It's not on the list. Okay, we did, Jackie did put on here the roof placement. So that is another RFP that we are looking to do. And that is going to be, we decided to split the project for the roofs, because originally for the, the bathroom, we were going to do, include the roof as part of that. But we made the decision, because all the pavilions need roofs too, to put the, it's going to be an RFP that'll include all the pavilion roofs, which I believe there's six.
There are six pavilions.
The bathroom roof that is in, on Park Ave, and then it'll also include the old electrical room, which is by the basketball courts, the brown brick building there. And then the one that is unknown at this time, that we just need to walk through to figure out the history, is the bathrooms and the concession stand in the middle, which is that, the decorative brick building. That one will not be sided, just to go back to clarify that. So those will be the ones that will be, have roofing. Again, the intent is to have similar roofing to the press boxes, again, for uniformity. The one roof that will not be replaced will be the one that is behind the Little League field. That one was just replaced in the last five years. So that one is still a newer roof. So we'll probably just going to do the other ones. And then once it's time for that one, we'll, we'll address it then.
So the actual soil erosion, there's nothing being done for that, as you know, as yet?
That I'm not aware.
I mean, you can have a really pretty good pavilion, but if, you know, I know one time when I went there for something, it was like-
We could go up there and put some timbers in. That'll stop it. We could- Put some timbers in, that'll stop it, we could terrace it.
Yeah, cause I know, I went up there to do something and I helped them actually, we were actually scraping it to, just so we could stand in it, you know, so.
That's in Pavilion Six. So we have six pavilions, so right out here behind us, we have Pavilion One, Two, and Three. Pavilion Four is behind the two fields over here where they play, uh, play Little League. Pavilion Five is by where the restrooms are, and then Pavilion Six is the one up on the hill by the Workery Memorial. So those are the, uh, excuse me, six pavilions and, and in the process of reviewing all this, we've identified the, the roofs need to be replaced, so we'll go ahead and do that. Okay, any other questions or comments? Uh, Counselor Norris?
Um, just to clarify, so the bathrooms of Washington Park currently, I guess, they're not available to general park use? Meaning they're locked and they're only used by scheduled activities?
No, so during the day, they will be open for general use. And then at night, we close them up, cause we have had, uh, some, uh, issues, challenges, whatever word you wanna use, where people have used, have abused the bathroom, they've thrown, uh, toilet paper and clogged, clogged the, uh, the toilets and the sinks and people have kicked things and broken things and so we're trying to, uh, get it, we're trying to make sure that we can protect the bathrooms. So it'll be, you know, they'll be open, they are open during the normal working hours during normal day, and then at night, uh, people will lock them up and then if we need, if they, uh, you know, if they need to come in, then if somebody wants to use it at night, under the lights or whatever, then we can provide them with a code. So it's, it's not like they're being closed up during the day.
Thank you, and then my next question is about the small business grants. Um, obviously you have your reasoning, but if you can tell me, um, obviously there may have been a feeling that current city staff could not handle this in-house versus contracting it out, the process and the work process?
Is there a question?
Yes, I'm asking, to clarify, what was the rationale of removing this project, the small business grant verse doing it with city staff?
We didn't have the capacity.
I'm sorry?
We did not have the capacity to take this on with everything else that we're doing. That's why we, that's why we were going to, uh, outsource with a, with a contracted firm.
So in the development of this, how did you determine capacity not law, how did you determine what their impact would be?
Uh, I don't understand, ask, can you ask that question a different way, I don't understand your question.
Well, you're saying that you determined that the staff did not have the capacity to do this, so my question is, how did you determine what the impact to the staff would be?
We asked them if they could take on this program. I mean, we talked about what it would take, cause we had already talked to, uh, the group that was going to facilitate this, and we talked about how they were gonna do it. And then we went internal to see if we could mimic that, and we didn't have the staff to do it. If, you know, uh, finance doesn't have additional people and, uh, my economic development manager is only one person, so between that, those two groups, I did not have the internal staffing in order to do this.
You'd be considered contacting the town and contracting with the town to, uh?
Well, the ta- we talked to the ta- well, I talked to the town, they were having their own challenges with trying to execute what they were gonna do. And they were not as successful as they thought they were gonna be, uh, with their program, but I think they did give some grants out, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, once, first, I appreciate this update with the column of what's complete, cause that's very helpful, um, information. What is our plan for these additional projects? If we cannot fund them with ARPA funds, are we still going to move forward with them and how are we going to do that?
Ron, you wanna address that?
So, the, the biggest thing right now is getting these projects kind of queued up, so we can, so we do have dollar amounts. If for some reason, all the projects up top come in at right at their estimated amount and or over, well, then we will take these additional projects and evaluate them and see if, which ones we will move forward from the capital funds. And which ones we may just end up having to take a step back, reassess, and then rebudget for those during the budget process and include, start including those in capital. I believe there are so- some money set aside in capital for the pavilion roofs already. Um, I don't remember the exact amount that Mary had budgeted for that, so we'll kind of take a look at it and go project by project. But our big thing is we wanna make sure we have these projects in the queue with dollar amounts, so that if, like I said, my, the, the big, like, just the big numbers that tennis courts, is why I just keep going back to it, is because that is just under a million dollars and it may come in at the million, or it may come in significantly lower or higher, we, we don't know, so. But the, I think what will happen is, once we know that we have all this ARPA money obligated, then we'll take a step back and look at the other projects that currently don't have ARPA funding and see if we can fund them through capital and move forward. I mean, I believe it's the mayor's intention, I don't wanna speak for him, is to get these projects completed that we have listed here, cause they are important projects, we feel, for the park, for the face of the city and the, and the beach.
Correct.
So, because when, when we discussed adding the, um, fire department truck replacement and the ladder truck repairs, I know, obviously those things need to be, need to be done no matter what. But, the fire department does have money in their vehicle repair fund and other departments, like Parks and Rec, don't necessarily have the money set aside for these projects, so my, my thought is that if we, if they're on the same timeline, does it not make sense maybe to pull the money from the fire department vehicle fund rather than from ARPA funds? If we know that we have these other projects that we want to get done, and to me, I think if you ask any resident what they want, what they think ARPA funds are used for, I think they'd be more likely to say a Parks and Rec project than a fire truck replacement, and not because one is better than the other, but I think in their mind, I think that's more what the funds are intended for, and unfortunately, because our fire department plans, well, um, they have the money to pay for their own repairs.
So we have had internal discussions about doing that, what we wanted to do is we wanted to present this to the council and see if the council was okay with, with where we're looking to go. And then once we, once these three RFPs come in, then we'll have an idea of how much money we have and where, and where, uh, we need to move money in order to, uh, make sure that we get the most out of the money in order to get our most projects for the, for the money. There is, there are capital, so there's, there's truck repair money, but the truck repair money is less than this total amount here. There is capital money in the fire department budget that, uh, in the last seven years, I've been putting aside extra money because of the, the ladder trucks that are gonna timeout within eighteen months of each other. And there's two schools of thought, one is to bond and one is to, you pay, and I'm going with a hybrid. Now, it takes fiscal discipline, so, uh, you know, we could always find a reason. But if I need to tap into that, so that we could put more money, ARPA money into the parks, we can certainly do that. But that's an internal discussion that we're currently having. Uh, but we're not gonna be able to finish that discussion until these come in, and once they come in, then we'll have that internal discussion, then we'll come back and we'll brief council. Ron, go ahead.
So yeah, so that was part of the discussion, that fire, fire designate, capital that's designated for the fire department may be reallocated to another department if, if all the ARPA fund is spent, is spent and we need to do some additional projects. So, so we may move, even though it's all in the capital fund, but there are designations, it's kind of reserved for the fire department based on what they've been putting. We did say that we may reallocate a portion of that up to the eighty six thousand, eighty seven thousand to another project inside the capital. So that has been discussed, yes.
Counselor Norris, you still have your hand up?
Yeah, unfortunately, um, so I, I, I keep going back to this small business grant capacity. So for a hundred, so my first question is, when does the money need to be spent as, to the extent that it can? Is it December twenty sixth?
Well, so, answering that specific question, yes. But that's not, I don't think that's the question you're intending to ans- ask.
What question am I intending to ask?
When do I have to have this obligated by? So I have to have the money, the ARPA money has to be obligated, and we got, uh, the email from CCM that everybody was operating, all the local municipalities were operating under, uh, under the assumption that uh, obligated meant getting it approved through council. And then the email that I attached, had attached into this packet says that, this came from CCM, and I've talked to Norwich, New London, and, and John Burton Groton, and people are scrambling now because they were under the same, uh, the same interpretation that we were, and then now CCM says nope. Or actually, they, they've reiterated what the feds have said, federal government said, and that is, it has to be obligated by the end of this year, which means you have to have a PO to it. So that's what's driving coming back and reallocating, uh, some of this money is so that we spend all of the ARPA money that we were authorized. So does that better answer? Does that better provide you information?
Yes, thank, thank you, I was, I'm, I'm just a little, cause I know this has been a while, but the way I look at it, a hundred thousand dollars, even if businesses only apply for five thousand dollars each, that's not a whole lot of grants to process through, and I know it's the last hour to make that. But, but even though I go back to that capacity thing, you know, if we were only talking about twenty grant applications, I, I wish we could update that, but, but I get it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this presentation? Okay? And that concludes in that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion as a second, call in favor?
Aye.
Those, stents, and motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.